Access to the recording will be made available on the district website as soon as it is possible. Very limited space is also being provided for the public here at the D A O. Using proper medical screening questions and social distancing. Online public input is also encouraged and welcomed. A link for this is located on the district website. Tonight, we did have one person with public input. It will be forwarded to Carol Potter for an answer. Shannon, can you read our mission statement?
No, I'll catch my breath.
Good idea. Our mission is to provide a safe and caring climate and culture in which we engage, inspire, educate, prepare, and empower all learners in partnership with their surrounding communities to be successful in today's and tomorrow's society.
Thank you. Alright, we will call the meeting in order at six thirty-two. Sorry about me being late. Today's date is December sixteenth, two thousand twenty. I'm located here at the D A O along with some of the board members and some people are remote. Last, can you take, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Chair Polaris?
Yes.
Dr. Green sent a message that he has a family situation and he will be unable to attend tonight's meeting.
Alright, okay Shannon, we'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Shannon. Can you take role?
Jeff Polaris?
Here.
Monica Segura-Schwarz?
Here.
Al Dalgrin?
Here at the district office.
Shannon Haas here. Natalie Ringsmith?
I am here in my office in the St. Cloud area.
Zach Dorhal?
Present.
He's present and Les Green is absent. Also attendants tonight, Superintendent Willie Jett, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Education, Dr. Marcia Baish, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education, Dr. Lori Putnam, Executive Director of Learning and Teaching, Lori Poche, Executive Director of Student Services and Special Education, Carol Potter, Executive Director of Research Evaluation Assessment and Enrollment, Dr. Sylvia Huff, Executive Director of Community Education, Adam Holm, Executive Director of Finance Business Services, Amy Scowler, Executive Director of Operations, Gary Ganji, Executive Director of Human Resources, Tracy Flynn-Bowle, Director of Community Engagement and Communications, Tammy Deland, Director of Equity Services, Ellen Stewart, Director of Technology, Ryan Cox, Executive Assistant, Mary Kusterman. And I know we have a few guests out there. I can see Jason Harris. I'm not sure who else is out there joining us tonight.
Alright, thank you Shannon. Next up is the approval agenda number one. I'm looking for a motion to accept tonight's agenda as recorded. Solved.
Hi, Seth.
Okay, thank you. I have a second. Shannon, could you take role again?
Yes. Zach Dorhal?
Present.
Yes. Natalie Ringsmith?
Yes.
Shannon Haas is yes. Al Dalgrin?
Yes.
Monica Segura-Schwarz?
Yes.
Jeff Polaris?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Next up is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of non-controversial items that the board routinely doubts about today. Any single member on the board may remove an item from the consent agenda by requesting removal at the time the consent agenda is moved to a motion. The full text of items will be on the end of our agenda. Tonight, item A, approval of minutes, the meetings we have November eighth to December second. Item B, approval of payment of bills and other financial transactions in the amount of three million, one hundred and ninety-three thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-three cents. Item C, approval of staff change. Item D, acceptance of manual information. Item E, authorization to sign legal documents. Item F, proposal revised air policy two ninety-four, nepotism and employment, subject to agreement. This is time to look at for motion to accept tonight's consent agenda as recorded.
Our motion to approve the consent agenda?
Hi, Seth.
Monica, second up. Alright, could you please take role one more time?
Shannon Haas is yes. Al Dalgrin?
Yes, yes.
Monica Segura-Schwarz?
Yes.
Jeff Polaris?
Yes.
Zach Dorhal?
Yes.
And Natalie Ringsmith?
Yes.
Alright, we will move into our informational items. First up will be a presentation, Tech High School presentation. It's going to be done by Principal Jason Harris. I will ask board members to hold all your questions till the end of the presentation. It's all yours, Jason. Quick presentation.
Alright, good evening, board members, Superintendent Jett and Cabinet. Thanks for having me today. First, I'm excited to share what's going on in the tech learning community and we'll get a chance to just see a lot of things that have been taking place within the course of this year. Next slide, Ryan. The outcomes for tonight's presentation, you'll get a chance to learn about Tech High School and how we'll achieve our mission and strategic plan. One of the focus areas of specifically the outcomes of how we build community, how we create norms of collaboration, how we create that safe learning environment and how it's responsive to student learning. And you'll see a few highlights and recent successes in us achieving our mission and strategic plan. Next slide. Live your beliefs and you can turn the world around. I think for me, next slide, Ryan, for me coming into a new learning community, the main thing was starting out with our staff and our stakeholders of where our beliefs lie. And we did a lot of upfront work in August and September, really starting to look at the beliefs of the learning community. What do we believe around student learning? And we started with our mission and strategic plan and core values. And the key things that highlighted for our staff was specifically, you see the highlighted words, "safe," "caring," "empowering all," were words that really resonated in the work that we did together through multiple activities. And we start to focusing on how can we make our mission come to life? How do we make these words come to life in day-to-day practices? And our staff start to have those conversations on moving towards our strategic plan. And you can see it, the highlighted hexagons, lifelong learning is essential, everyone deserves equitable access to high-quality education. And every student that comes through the tech learning community first should graduate from high school with some type of college or career opportunities and credit to prepare them for post-secondary options. And we started to have this conversation in August around that. And you can see our staff focused in on our pillars, pride, respect, responsibility. I think one of the things for our staff specifically, we started to talk about pride. I know in the past year, tech struggled with some high incident things where the pandemic and then some incidents where the learning community had a hard time, they were struggling. And one of the things as a leader coming in, we wanted to get grounded in the work around our mission and strategic plan. Next slide. One of the ways that you look and get grounded is you look at data. What's our current reality? I think one of the things specifically we start to focus on, even in June, when I start to look at, you know, getting the opportunity to take over as a leader at Tech High School, let's look at five areas of data. I want to shout out our administrative team and then our teachers and staff for really starting to look at where we are. What is our current reality? When you look at the student demographics, we have a well-rounded, diverse ethnic group and socioeconomic disabilities and multilingual learners. And when you look at a diverse population as Tech High School, you start to look at how can we meet the needs of all students? And so we start to develop a plan in those five areas on how do we maximize the potential of all our learners to prepare them for post-secondary options, starting in ninth grade. Next slide. The focus areas, we wanted to align our work strategically to our district mission and strategic plan. And our focus areas, knowing some of the history was building a community. How do we specifically build community? How do we create norms of collaboration? How do we make sure all students are learning at a high level through ensuring learning? And how do we create that safe, healthy, responsive learning environment for all students? And those are our focus areas. We aligned it right to the district strategic plan and we aligned it to our site continuous improvement plan. Next slide. When you build community, you have to look at multiple areas. And we wanted to really focus in on the relationships. In a regular, ordinary year, relationships are critical. Now in a pandemic, they're more critical than ever. So how do we create meaningful lasting relationships with multiple stakeholders? And one of the things we started to do was talk to our staff, our students, our families, and start to align the vision of the tech learning community and where do we want to go for the future? And it started with me and all our staff sharing, who are we, right? For our students to know, our staff, who's Principal Harris? Who are our stakeholders? And one of the things we focused in on was a pride profile. So all the staff created a pride profile to create those meaningful relationships on who we were, who our staff was for our students. And we started to do that in August, September, and we've continued to really try to create meaningful relationships. And in the next slide, you'll get a chance to see some of the collaborations we've done with this next video. Next slide. Ryan, are we not hearing volume?
So the Tech Student Leadership Collaborative is kind of a combination of a bunch of different students' ideas as well as administration and trying to figure out a way to get student voice to be heard here at Tech. It started with ideas over the past couple of years from our student leadership groups, from N H S and from Student Council. And those members coming together saying, how can we build a link between these groups and reach out and really get a taste of what Tech is all about? And getting this group of students of roughly thirty to thirty-five students together to just have a conversation. And so you had a lot of great ideas coming from a lot of different groups. And students who don't always voice up finally had a chance. Those strongholds of pride, respect, and responsibility, those are what make Tech Tech. We asked students to come up with ideas or ways that we could let students know what needs to be done. Wearing a mask or keeping your six-foot distance, the students brought up the idea of doing the videos themselves. They're used to hearing everything from admin and from their teachers, but they need to hear it from peers. You know, those students are doing it, then we should do it so that we can all stay in session. Students really follow our Instagrams and our social media to get the word out. So we've talked about ways of supporting each other. So we act and N H S got together and they did the "We Scare for Hunger" and the holidays. And so one of the things that we did was all of our different groups pushed out about the information. So it's just the idea of just all of us working together to support each of the groups that we're trying to get our students to stay connected and feel a part of the tech community.
This is the sixth year of the Tiger Build. It mostly started with a retired teacher now, Bill Garcelle. And he had a big passion for construction. He was the big push to all of it. The Tech Tiger Build begins with just steel I-beams sitting on the ground. And then Simonson will bring the floor truss load. And so we just set every single floor truss and then laid the floor. St. Cloud Technical Community College brings in their electricians and their plumbers. So those instructors bring their students and then they do spend at least an hour with us. They kind of talk about what their program does. Most of them are two-year programs. So they're getting our tech students thinking about, you know, that two-year technical career path or college path. H and S, Heating and Air, they come in, they give us a temporary heater so we can work in the cold. And then Habitat for Humanity is a great promoter for this program. They're great to work with as well. The students that are in the year-long course, they get every single skill that a house would require. I always tell them, hopefully you're going to own a home someday. And just the skills that you're getting here are going to save you a ton of money just by being able to do a couple of things to your own house. I do believe there's a need for working with your hands. If you enjoy working with your hands, you've got a great career ahead of you. And the sky is the limit for anyone that just wants to work.
So BAR is an acronym for Building Assets and Reducing Risks. All in all, it's really just like having a team of teachers and administrators that work with a cohort of ninth graders. It was developed because a guidance counselor was noticing that there's a direct correlation between freshman failures and graduation rates. Huge area of opportunity. Each student gets some time to be talked about. We recognize our strengths, social emotional skills, school skills, what's going on in their lives, like anything we can do to just raise them at least a little bit. That's BAR and that's shelf, some of the ways we recognize students. Anything from like praise to calling and emailing and sending postcards home. We keep track of how many of those we do so we make sure every student can at least get recognized at least a little bit. If I hear that something was amazing and we know that that student really likes Miss Boca, then I'm the one to make sure that I'm the one saying, hey, I heard what you did. We talked about you. And that seems to be one of our biggest things right now that's working. I'm teaching a student that I actually had, this student really struggled and I was actually awful. To be like, hey, we were just talking about you. And like immediately, it was like I had that kid hooked right back in. I saw the growth in the student that I don't typically see because of the work that we were able to put into this student. So BAR has changed the community in two ways. The students in the BAR program are engaged with each other. They're out of their shell more. They're talking to friends more. I'm seeing more collaboration. Teachers are talking to each other across content areas and we're catching things. And then when we catch it, we can fix it and we have the team to do that. The biggest thing for me is the fact that every student's getting recognized at every grade level. Every student deserves that time and they still need that validation. They still need, someone can really benefit them or at least make them feel special. Seven forty-two, be the difference.
Seven forty-two, be the difference.
Seven forty-two, be the difference.
So as you can see from the video, some of the main things of that meaningful partnership is student voice, our community partners, if it's St. Cloud Technical College, if it's Heating and Air, if it's Habitat for Humanity, or if it's BAR, where we've really found eight strategies on how to really create opportunity and access and high achievement for all students. One of the things within the collaborative approach when you're coming into a new school is really having that strategic plan and instruction and outcomes is key for us. And maintaining a systematic process for that with our specific departments and teams front and center has helped us so far kind of align our work. Next slide. I think one of the things coming into, for me, coming into a new environment, you know, is learning the culture. But coming into a new environment with the pandemic was just something that was extra added and how do we continue to keep student learning and achievement front and center? And we know safe, healthy, responsive learning environment is key. And one of the things specifically, when I started out in August, it was real impactful when I started to talk to the students and students said, hey, I really never knew how much I appreciated school and who it wasn't there. And that kind of grounded us to say, wow, alright. If a student says, hey, I didn't know that when school was taken away, how much I missed it. My friends, the socialization, me seeing my teachers, that really hit home. And we started to work then. And the students start to lead to say, hey, let's create these healthy, safe habits. Let's wear a mask. Let's stay socially distanced because they wanted to stay in school and they didn't want to get to a point where we had an outbreak or COVID spread. And they kind of took the lead with us as staff. And I think that was powerful for our, for our teachers to see. I think one of the things in this time of a pandemic was the instructional changes, right? Our staff wanted to feel safe. They didn't want to come into an environment feeling that, you know, they were going to, you know, test positive or get COVID or those things. And we put some good parameters in to help them feel safe. And we learned a lot during the hybrid and now with Distance Learning two point oh. I can't say more enough about our staff and their dedication around learning and achievement and stretching theirselves. We found to do some innovative things. I think one of the things with technology, a shout out to Ryan and the technology department, even before school started, we delivered over thirteen hundred iPads, right? And that was something new for us. We typically would distribute iPads during the, during the school when it started. And now we found new ways. I think we stretched ourselves to be innovative. I think we found to build more community support. And then really meeting the basic needs of our students with meals and finding ways to really make sure our students are getting all their needs met. Next slide. I think within this pandemic, we've seen a lot and I kind of talked about it a little bit with the students and how they're feeling and even with the staff and this new learning model. Think about it, if you've been going to school for your whole lifetime and you're in person and you're seeing your teachers and all of that changes, that, that takes a toll on a student's mental health. And one of the things that we learned with our perception data is how do we support our students' social emotional growth along with their academic growth? And next slide, Ryan. I think when you, when we looked at the climate data in two thousand nineteen, sixty-five percent of students said their teachers cared about me. Sixty-eight percent of the students felt that their teachers made them feel good about theirselves. And then we saw forty-three percent of the students said, my, my peers respect me. And when you look at that, one of the things you want to kind of look at in a strategically plan, how do you create that community? How do you build that community and relationships are meaningful? Ryan, if you go to the next slide, you'll see the students finding fun ways. If you got a chance to put a pie in your teacher's face, that could build some healthy climate, right? We've, we've found some ways to really create still fun within a pandemic and really try to create some normacy for students and what they expect and what they deserve around achievement and just creating that environment. Next slide. One of the ways that we implemented a new practice was advisory. And we know it's a strategic evidence-based approach where one teacher has a group of students throughout the year. And one of the things when we looked at the data from the spring was the connection. How I had, did I have a social connection? How do I connect with my teachers? So we implemented advisory where specifically a teacher has a group of students. We do multiple lessons specifically around social emotional learning. If it's what career goals you want, and you can see down at the bottom, sixty-four percent of the students want to go to a four-year college, right? It was another way for us to get data on what's going on in real time right now and having students and staff times to check in and what they need. You see me in the middle just kind of talking to the students specifically around how do we move forward? What do you need? And how do we support you to meet our ultimate goal? Where we want all students to have post-secondary options and the access early in ninth grade all the way to twelfth grade. And we had that through, we're having that through advisory and we're, we're having some good success. And we're learning a lot of things about our students and how we should program. Next slide. Here's a slide where this, this will ground you, right? Within that advisory lesson, we collected data. I wish my teacher knew this, right? So if you look at it, one of the top ones, I have a hard time listening early in the morning, how grateful I am for my teachers. We shared this with our staff to ground them of what's going on with our students, right? And then how do we take this data in real lifetime and how do we support our students on their needs towards our goal? And one of the things that we really wanted to show is real time, here's what students are saying, here's what they're feeling. And then how do we create programming to support them in this time? And that kind of ties into our perception data. Next slide. One of the things around those meaningful relationships is staff-student relationships. We know if, if staff and students have meaningful relationships, our evidence around research shows high student achievement. And one of the things we started to do was have staff and students affirm and acknowledge that who they are, if they're having fun, and kind of specifically identifying what students are doing well and what teachers are doing well. And this has been a big hit. I have one of these tiger stripes on my wall and I look at it and it just, a student said, hey, Mr. Harris cares about all the kids. That's powerful. It really hit home to me. And I think our students and staff have now created a relationship where they're acknowledging one another and we found good success with that. The other strategy was the tech talks and really getting to know our staff and students. And that building that climate, when you saw the data, we know if we can talk, if our students can ask our staff personal questions around careers, around your story, we know that builds community. And we have a few board members and cabinet members that took part in tech talks. I'm opening it up for anyone that's interested because it really impacts our students to hear what, how they can learn from our adults and how we can really plant the seed for their future now. And tech talks has been a good one that we've really learned from. Next slide. And then in the midst of that, when you saw that forty-five percent of the students say, hey, we don't respect each other as peers, how do, how do you create student-to-student relationships? And one of the things that we wanted to do is really highlight, you know, Spirit Week. You see N H S really peer tutoring. We know when peers work with each other, they can learn at high levels. Or even just saying, hey, have an amazing day in a letter. We know that creates an environment specifically to promote a healthy environment around achievement. And the student-student relationships are critical. And we found some success just with creating that normacy around, let's appreciate each other. Let's, let's have tiger pride and some of the things of having space for all students to kind of, within affinity group, really talk about who they are. And we really had some good success with that. Next slide. And one of the biggest things, if, if our staff don't feel connected to each other in staff and staff relationships, nothing could really move forward. So our staff has really done a good job of really connecting with each other. You see it in the top where even the Bears and Vikings can get together and celebrate a little bit. Or if it's specifically a coffee and conversations to talk about what good ideas do you have? What do you need? What's going on to a yoga session to really help our mental health? And then turkey bingo of just having fun. And we've really tried to be intentional to create those relationships. And it's really been helpful for our learning environment, specifically in a pandemic. Next slide. The homeschool relationship is the critical one. We've learned a lot of new things around how do we connect with families? If it's virtual, we did a back-to-school conference. I think we've been kind of spinning our wheels to trying to find out how do we engage with all families? I think we found some new ways within this pandemic that we could meet with families virtually. Or we can go out to the community. We see right now kind of a digital divide. We've been out in the community saying, hey, here's how we can help you get into Skyway. Here's how we can help you get into Schoolage. Here's how we support you in our new way of delivery. And I think that creates that family-community engagement. And we've, we've learned a lot within the pandemic and being innovative. And uh we've, we've learned a lot within the pandemic and being innovative and trying new things. I think it stretched us to look at some things differently. And that homeschool relationship is critical. Ensuring learning, uh, one of the things when I stated uh one of the visions to make sure all students graduate from tech high school with some type of college credit or career uh internship or apprenticeship or something where it's going to be meaningful for them around their interests. When you see it, uh eighty-one percent of the tech students are graduating in four years compared to eighty-three percent of the state. And when you look at seven years, ninety-three percent of our students are graduating at a, at a high level. Um, one of the things that we really want to do is make sure all students are graduated and have some post-secondary options after high school, but it has to start in ninth grade. Next slide. I think when we look at it, we wanted to set a goal within our site improvement plan and working with our teachers uh for this year. Eighty-five percent of the students, we want to graduate uh high school in four years. And we want to specifically and, and with intent, uh, we see uh our students of color are, are graduating at a lower rate and we want to be intentional about making sure uh all students are uh college and career ready uh within our uh site improvement plan around our goals of graduation. And one of the things we started to do is making sure everybody has an understanding that we want all students to graduate and have some type of uh options after high school. And I don't care who they are, how they show up. Our focus is, is making sure that students have options uh after high school and this has to start in ninth grade. Next slide. And then one of the things where we talked about making sure students get some type of college credit in high school. We know when looking at other uh school districts across the state, we can have this high bar to make sure the students can get some type of college credit in high school. When you look at the numbers in two thousand twenty compared to two thousand nineteen, you see some decline. But one of the things that uh we start to look and analyze was a lot of students were stressed out last year, uh specifically within the pandemic. And some students did not take some of those uh tests and you see some of the decrease in that. But uh I think uh just analyzing and find out what's going on was uh i- if a lot of it played a part to uh the pandemic and our current reality last spring. Next slide. I think one of the things in, in having that advisory is continuing to find ways to collect data. So you see, uh, we're asking students, what are your career goals? So they know, start to think about this and how do we, within those advisory uh lessons, really set a plan for students? Each student should have some type of individual plan around how they're gonna graduate, what type of career goals. And we started to see, and you see it here, where a student says, hey, I want to graduate from technical college. Or a student says, hey, I want to do interior designing or I want a PhD. But I think the key part of this is getting this data out for students to talk about it and then kind of set goal. How we make sure every student has a goal and how do we support them along the way to uh meet that goal uh when they're in twelfth grade and getting ready to graduate. Next slide. I think one of the things we, we know is we have to get the community involved. Uh, United Way, our colleges, we found ways to continually create those post-secondary options, even in a pandemic where on Fridays, we have colleges come virtually to talk to our students to make sure that they understand, here's some opportunities and options for you. And this is for all students because we want to make sure every student has access and opportunity to secondary options. And you see it, if it's me going out to St. Cloud State to talk to our future educators, to do some recruiting, I think in this slide, we took uh students who are graduating in December from St. Cloud State and probably three of them now have a job within our district. And uh I think it's our responsibility to give back to the uh educational community and go out and recruit and make sure we're having our future educators come within our school system. Uh, and you see it here. Next slide. I think the, the, the other exciting piece uh for us is that we really want to look at is really creating that partnership with our um industry folks. Um, the seven four-two uh Career and College Advisory Committee is doing uh a lot of work right now with uh really focusing in on career uh cluster uh pathways around uh career, the career wheel. And we know finding ways that students, uh, once we find their interest, how do we uh help them get exposure and experience to these career fields? And I think this group uh here is really putting into place how we create those opportunities for our students now and planning for the future. Next slide. I think one of the, the biggest uh things that we, when we look at the student achievement data is the star data between ninth and tenth grade students. When you're out for six months, you know, folks were starting to talk about, well, learning loss, you get typical learning loss over the summer within the thirteen weeks. But we didn't really know how much learning loss would take place over six months. And one of the things we found out, our students were actually doing better than what we thought and predicted, specifically looking at our benchmark star data. When you look at fall eighteen, nineteen uh reading for our ninth graders and then fall nineteen, twenty uh reading, over sixty-plus percent, uh sixty, sixty percent of the students had average or high-average growth. That, that's a good thing. And one of the things we look at is how students are growing when they come in and how they show up. And when you look at it at tenth grade, the same thing. Over sixty percent of the students had uh average or high-average growth. And that's a good sign uh for us when, when we were kind of thinking, well, w- we might have a lot of learning loss. But what we found is specifically within our ninth grade and tenth grade reading, we've had good growth within our students. Um, next slide. And then when you look at the, the math data specifically the same way, uh, about sixty percent of the students in ninth and tenth grade had average or above average growth. And that's a good thing. And so we were starting to say, well, what is this contributing to? And I've been talking to a lot of the teachers and departments. The BAR program and the strategies, the eight strategies around BAR, research-based strategies that we feel can create this learning for students. And one of the focus areas for us at tech is how do we create these strategies? Not just in ninth grade, but across all the way to twelfth grade. Because meaningful relationships, finding where students strengths are and growing from that, we know that's evidence-based. And we can see some of the data here uh in, in achievement and growth uh for our students. Next slide. I think one of the things within the pandemic, how do you keep that, that growth, that average growth to high-average growth? And one of the things we started to look at is uh in multiple ways, really looking at the whole child and how do we support them? If it's computer literacy, if it's academic support, if it's mental health, if it's yoga, if it's mentorship. We know right now it's more important to, than ever to really have a holistic approach of how we really support students. And some of the things in getting that perception data from students is I don't want to be in a, a session, uh, a virtual session all day and then go get help. So we said, all right, well, what can we do? We extended our times after school all the way up until nine o'clock where students could get that support if they need it. They know, here's where I could go to get any type of support, if it's mental health or if it's academic. And we want to continue, continue that learning and achievement uh around that. And so we've created some after-school programming for students uh specifically. Uh, next slide. I think when, when we look at it, uh, to meet all the, the student needs, uh, the diversity, uh, the ethnicity, the sexual orientation, uh, and creating that, that opportunity for students to achieve at a high level. You see it here when you see our, at the top, our uh National Honor Society. Or when you look at trimester one, student of the month, you have a diverse population that you see this. This staff have acknowledged students around pride, respect, responsibility. I think within a pandemic, you see our student athletes, our, our tech soccer team. Shout out to the tech soccer team, section champs, uh, to the coaches. I think that's a good thing. When you're in a pandemic and students still could achieve at high levels, uh, we're doing something good. Or if it's uh our, uh, one of our state uh tennis athletes, Ashley Tarralyan, getting uh over a hundred-plus wins in her career. Uh, I think in this time, uh, it is, it's something to beat a difference. And uh I think it starts with really building that community and creating a vision within our uh tech learning community. And uh again, I couldn't do this without uh my administrative team. I couldn't do this without the, the staff at tech. Uh, they're dedicated, they're trying to create innovative ways around learning. And then our, our stakeholders, our parents, and then our community. Uh, really um taking hold to me and the vision and, and how we move it forward. So I'm, I'm just thankful to have this opportunity. Uh, next slide.
Welcome to Tech High School, home of the Tigers, where our focus is on pride, respect, responsibility.
Everything I do is absolutely essential to this change in world.
Stuff and hey, you know, we're making, we're making changes in our community that are, that are just amazing. Like what I would, what I would recommend for you guys is chase those dreams, um, even if, even if it's not something you're good at, you know? I mean, if it's just something that you love and you're passionate about, um, go for it.
Just having that frame of mind of, you know, me being who I am is not my problem.
The best advice I would give somebody is don't ever close the door and, and really truly think about what makes you happy.
Um, the, the positive trade-off to the situation that the world is in right now is, is right in front of you.
This uh educational empowerment is, is all about bringing and tapping into my personal experiences as a young uh Muslim Somali American refugee.
To inspire others and the next generation to know that it's okay to be true to yourself and to be authentically you.
And don't let anyone tell you otherwise. Um, there, there, there's opportunities out there and people are going to tell you, no, no. I was told years ago, why would you be a social studies teacher? Social studies teachers are dime a dozen.
How I create uh educational empowerment uh opportunities is using literature.
And it's being able to be true to myself. And so hopefully I can inspire other women, especially other women of color, um, to embrace, you know, what makes them who they are and to not feel like it needs to be tempered or minimized in any way.
You don't have to be who you are today, tomorrow. You all grow, you all evolve, but be happy with who you are today, today.
Are we even with the favorite quote? Education is the most thoughtful weapon to change the world.
I say a quick thank you to all the tech teachers and staff. Uh, trimester one wasn't the easiest, but we got through it. And I want to thank you for all your guys' hard work and uh focusing on our students.
Hi, this is Kenish and I'd like to say thank you to all the staff, teachers, and principals for all of you. I know it's really hard to be an extracurricular in this time, but I do feel that they're doing a really good job at it. Thank you and happy holidays.
Thank you for everything you guys do and all of our students really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, staff.
Thank you for everything you do.
Now, this was a student-created video. Um, shout out to student chemical, Leah Donnelly, uh Aubrey Nissler. Uh, they created that last video and uh that was powerful. Uh, they, they had multiple opportunities to find snapshots. And uh what could I say? When you have uh, uh, a dedicated uh student group and uh student voice and student leadership and you saw it, they created that product. So shout out to them.
Are you done, Jason?
Questions? Yes, thanks, Joe.
All right, no problem. Um, we'll start off, we're going to do the people at a remote and then we'll do the people local. Um, Natalie, would you mind starting us off tonight?
Sure thing. Thank you, um, Principal Harris. Uh, I'd really love to get that, that inside look from a student perspective. Um, and also just to see the, I liked how you did the slides where I, when I was looking at this before the meeting, I could see firsthand what part of our strategic plan you're working on and just what that looks like in your building. Um, I think that that was really helpful. Um, the one area I wanted to ask you about, um, that you've included in your slides and um was in our data packet was school climate. And I know there's been a ton of work that's been done um at your school on this. Um, but I'm wondering specifically about students respect one another. I do see that that's um been raised, you know, almost ten percent from a couple of years ago. But I'm still concerned about that forty-two percent. Um, you know, that obviously means that most, most students don't think that students respect one another. So what have you seen this year um that's, that's maybe giving you some hope um for the, for the raising of that number to continue?
I, I, I think when we got, first, the students had an opportunity to come back in the building this fall. And I think one of the things around uh creating that meaningful relationship amongst students is really setting the tone about we need to have pride in our environment, right? And we started that right early, that our focus, talking to the students, that our focus this year would be on pride. And the students took a good leadership role of saying, hey, we need to be respectful to each other. We need to meet the, the norms of our new guidelines around safety. And we were out visible, talking to students about that. And I think that kind of helped us this year so far of really creating that meaningful relationship for us to talk to students, to ask them what's going on and collecting that data. And you saw what, what I want my teacher to know all the way into career goals. And then how do you program once you get that data, I think was helpful. And then talking to the students, right? What, what do you want your community to look like? And in high school, the students are honest. They understand that they want an environment that is going to be best for all students. And I think that was helpful for us. And every other week, we meet with a student group to really talk about, how do you want your community to look? And we were flat out honest. You're in a brand-new building, uh, over a hundred million dollars. You need to have pride in this building, right? And how do we create that environment? And the students follow that suit to say, all right, we need to create an environment that's welcoming for all students. And then we need to understand, here's how we do it by talking and working with each other. And that advisory really helped because you have now a group of students that are learning multiple things, not just academics, about how to treat each other, how to uh be respectful. And I think that's really helped set the tone uh in September for us to really uh talk about how we move forward. Because uh last year was tough and our staff felt it, our students felt it, and they wanted to make a change. So we, 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 we listened and then we put programming in place. If it was Spirit Week to uh just finding out to, let's talk, what's going on? Let's, Natalie, come talk to us, come to tech talks, find out. Are we, or if it's students talking to each other, I think that's really helped the environment so far.
Yeah, that's, that's neat. I really do like that idea of tech talks. We have so much um wisdom, collective wisdom right here on this screen. And to see some of that wisdom on those tech talks is wonderful. Um, how has, how have the dean positions been working yet? I know that's new for you guys this year. Have you seen more connection um uh with students, um, with those dean positions being in place?
Yeah, I uh, we like the dean positions. We have three of, uh, four, what, three, uh, three, three deans. And I think right now within the pandemic is how do you make connections with students, right? And we create student life teams by grades, right? So the deans uh make phone calls, they conference with students, they really reach out to students uh to see uh what do you need, what's going on, how do I support you? And now more than ever, they've been really a good resource for us to really create that environment that, hey, an adult is here to help you. And if it's calling on the phone, if it's going to drop off supplies to the driveway at their house, it's really showing or talking to those families that we're here for you, right? We want students to know that we're here for you and that dean role has really helped us right now. And uh I just talked to that group not too long ago. Shout out to the deans, they do a great job and they're making meaningful connections. If it's daily calls, if it's conferencing virtually, I think they've really helped us within the environment.
That's great to hear. Uh, my last question is, what has been your biggest surprise during this um at-home learning that we've had to do and will probably continue to do for a while yet?
I, I think the, the biggest surprise was we were all under assumption that we would have a lot of learning loss. I, I think the, the biggest surprise was we were all under assumption that we would have a lot of learning loss, right? Being out for six months. And when we looked at the star data and it's only ninth and 10th grade, but we were, that's a good, that's something we really want to be able to look at to say, alright, we're doing something right. And right now, we're kind of looking at teacher practices and talking to teachers of what's going well. But I think that, that was probably the biggest one for, for, for us to say, alright, students aren't falling that far behind. We see some student, student growth.
Yeah, and thanks for sharing that with us because we're able to say, you know, when we're talking to the community and they're worried about learning loss, I can say actually the majority of, of Tech ninth and 10th graders um, are meeting or exceeding their growth goals, you know? And um, I think we hear so much in the country of kids falling back, but we have to talk specifically about our kids and what our kids are doing, so. Um, yeah, I feel like I could talk to you forever about this, but uh, I'll still do my three questions and pass it to my next board member. Thank you, Principal Harris.
Yeah, thank you. And the doors open, Natalie, come, come see me, call me, come visit.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, Les would have been next, but Monica, you'll be second then.
Thank you, Chapores. So hi, Jason, thank you very much. I'm gonna give you kudos for using the colors in your presentation. There was very cool and very nice use of our colors into it. Pay attention to those kind of things. Um, also, um, I did, I, I, I love the way that you framed the, the, the presentation and I love all the time that you spent in climate. It does seem like climate was one of the most important things to start tackling. And I also like the way that uh, you uh, came from climbing into what the climate does when you start using those strategies for uh, achievement. So you move right from it through, okay, now the people that are talking to the students, not only for feel-good students and let's see what's going on, are also asking them for career choices and also asking them for what is the future and also asking them for how is that we are going into achievement. So I did love that part and it was really good, smooth transition, very nice to be able to see that. Um, I am, I was, I, as well as Natalie, I, I'm, I'm glad that you um, showed the growth during the pandemic. One thing that I'm, that I'm trying, I'm scrolling down to the presentation and the data that I don't know if I missed is how has this been different for different student groups according to free and reduced lunch or to a access to, to devices or to uh, I don't know, economic status, um, uh, a language uh, learning? How has this been different for them?
I think, I think you understand, Monica, when you have a diverse population of students, you have diverse needs, right? And one of the things that we recognized within the pandemic was uh, some of the systematic things that have always been in place around achievement and achievement gaps around student groups. Uh, we're kind of micro, uh, under a microscope now within the pandemic. And I think our system has done a good job of having that understanding, right? That, and, and traditionally you see achievement gaps amongst student groups. And I think our system, uh, as well as tech, really starts to understand that and put strategies in place. So if it was, you know, making sure every student has a meal or if it was to make sure every student has a device. Right now, out of our students, every student has a device, right? To make sure. I think we even start to look at it a step further, learning from the spring was, alright, you could have broadband, but what if you don't have a fast, you can have wifi, but what if you don't have a fast broadband, right? And I got four people in the house and my broadband is moving slow, right? I think we found ways to do um, some innovative things with hotspots. Um, and uh, really focusing in on all students and what they need. I think when you have a diverse uh, group and a population, every student shows up differently. But I think if you have that front and center, knowing that is how you put supports in place. And I think systematically uh, from, 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 from cabinet, from school board to you guys, I think we've done a good job of really making sure we met, are meeting the needs of all students. And uh, I think when we look at the data, our students, uh, even our students of color are still growing uh, within, within this time. But I think it goes back to starting from you guys and the supports that are in place. And when you look at that slide around a safe, healthy, responsive learning environment and all the things by partnering with the community uh, and specifically put in programs in place for all students. I think, I think everybody in this virtual chat has an understanding of that. And I think uh, we've been putting uh, programming in place to meet the, the needs of all students.
Thank you so much, Jason. I have no more questions.
Alright, next up would be Zach. Zach, you have any questions? Alright, Al, you'd be next?
Um, not really any questions, just a couple of comments. And Jason, you know, and when you were at South, I could tell that you were um, the, the climate that you created in the school and just the, the energy and excitement that came along with you in that school. Uh, I thought that it was excellent. And then just from a competency and a leadership position, you seem to really grasp it well and lead, you're able to lead people and inspire kids the way that a, a, a school leader needs to do so. And so I'm very, very excited to have you at Tech. I feel really bad that you have this beautiful new facility in front of you with all of the things that you could be using right now and you, and you're unable to use it. But despite that, you're doing a phenomenal job inspiring students to do better. So I just want to say thank you and I appreciate that.
Thanks, Al. I, uh, I, I walk around the building to say the same thing is, is I'm here by myself and I, I miss seeing the students and the, and the staff and, you know, just the day-to-day business of a school. Uh, I think that, like you, you know, Alan, you've been there. I love that, that, that drives me and uh, I can't wait till we get back to uh, seeing students and staff.
Thank you. Shannon, you'd be up next, please?
My comments are similar to Al's. Uh, thank you very much for your energy and passion. You've got a great team over at Tech and you stepped into that. But I'm touched and appreciative of where you've taken it already, given the limit that you had, um, and the restrictions there with the pandemic. I'm impressed and very appreciative of the energy and everything that's going on there. So thank you very much, Jason.
Thanks, Shannon.
Jason, I just want to commend you on a nice presentation. Um, I want to commend Willie and the exec staff that were two-for-two for great high school principals. So that's awesome. Been impressive with both presentations. I'm going to ask some obvious questions, Jason, and some hard ones. Do you get any college credit for the big bill program? You're muted yet, Jason?
Yeah, we get, we don't get college credit, you get credit. It's a, it's a course that you take. But I think uh, one of the things that you hit is how do we get college credit for the big bill? I, I think uh, if our vision is to make sure all students get some type of uh, college credit within high school, I think that's something we want to start to, to look at in, around those partnerships uh, specifically.
I heard a, a myth about District 742 schools actually have more opportunity in classes in high school to earn college credits, is that true?
Can you repeat that again?
Do we lead the area in AP classes? We have the most choices?
Uh, yes, we do.
Yes, we do, don't we?
We do. I, I think one of the things that I learned coming into high school is students have multiple options uh, around uh, achievement. And I was really impressed uh, to see all the offering students could get because we know that's important to find some type of interest. I think Jeff, you understand specifically, right now, we're looking at talking to those industry folks on how we create those pathways uh, around that career will to create that environment within a school. I think uh, for us, we want to, we want to set ourselves further apart from our surrounding school districts around having career paths. So if you come to Tech High School, if I want to go to uh, manufacturing or health services, you have a pathway to do that. And I think uh, that, those are the steps that, right now, and I think in a couple of weeks, you're going to hear more about of what we want to do.
Awesome. Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Lori, for your part in that too. Um, last question, Jason. It sounds like uh, communication is a big part of your, your school. Can you tell me, does the Apollo principal and the Tech principal meet? And do they share great ideas? Because each school had unique, great ideas. And give me an example of one you shared with Tech or Apollo and one Apollo shared with you.
Alright, so I'm going to put this out here. Me and, me and Principal Fisher have a good collaboration. And I think one of the things uh, coming into high school, uh, we sat down and we talked, right? How do we create a collaborative culture amongst the high schools? Also in a fun, competitive way. And uh, one of the things Principal Fisher specifically did, and Principal Fisher, shout out to her out there. If you look at, uh, she pulled me into a, 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 a photo shoot uh, of both high schools at the beginning of the year, right? I'm not a big person in front of the camera and all of those things, but Principal Fisher said, hey, let's, let's get together, let's, let's do something for our two high schools. And she, she roped me in and uh, she's been real, uh, I, I've learned a lot from her around how to be out in the public. Uh, if it's a YouTube video, if it's uh, you know, a, 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 a video where we're just out taking pictures. And she shared that and, and it's kind of stuck. I think the other thing that she shared is around the advisory. Uh, Paula was doing advisory last year and I really got a chance to talk to her how we could do some advisory program in a tech. But I think uh, we've created a good collaboration amongst the two high schools. And I talked to, I just talked to Principal Fisher this uh, not too long ago and she wished me well on this presentation. So I think that's good for our community.
Thank you for sharing that, Jason. We are truly better when we're a team. Thank, thanks for the presentation and Willie, you have something to add?
I, I do and I'll make it short and I'll make it sweet, but yet I won't. And so Principal Harris, I think all of us that are sitting here listening, we're fortunate that you are student-centered, you are a relationship builder, you are a pied piper of, with students, staff, and families. People love to follow you. One of the biggest things is you are data-driven, you are a data-driven decision-maker. And last but not least, academic success drives you. And so I think that for us here in the 742 community, the Greater St. Cloud area, and all the students, whether they're coming from the south side, getting a chance to experience tech, and even in the competitive spirit on the north side of, of going up against you. I think all of our students are fortunate and I'd just like to say thank you for what you do. We're excited for where you are taking Tech High School. That is it.
Thanks Superintendent Jet. I just appreciate the opportunity to live my purpose and passion.
Thank you much. Have a nice evening. Next up, Item B, School Updates. It's going to be done by Dr. Marcia Beisch, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Education, and Dr. Lori Putnam, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education.
Good evening, Chair Polri, Superintendent Jet, members of the board, and community members joining us via live streaming this evening. Let's see. Can you go to the second slide, Ryan? Whoops, it keeps jumping. There we go. And let's begin this evening with a, with a photo of a thank you from Jean Voight's second grade class at Kennedy. And this is a thank you for the school supplies that were provided by the Learning and Teaching Department that were distributed to students as elementary went into Distance Learning 2.0. And you can see their whiteboards that, that was one of the school supplies that they received. Um, and so they are using those. Um, tonight, they're using those to say thank you, but they're using those in lots of ways to learn. Tonight, Dr. Putnam and I will share with you examples of the academic and social emotional learning supports available to students during Distance Learning 2.0. At the elementary level, teachers remain in Google Meet during the duration of a class in the event students need help with assigned work. And students can also receive support on Flex Fridays. And parents and students always have the option of connecting with teachers through CSA, email, or phone calls. In addition, virtual calming rooms are available via the Distance Learning 2.0 website for students to access. Activities include breathing and relaxation exercises, coloring, movement, and yoga for elementary, to name a few. Counselors and administrators at various sites are supporting lunch bunches and snack time together to support the socialization of students during the day. Kennedy's second grade teacher, Ms. Voight, and fifth grade teacher, Mr. Schaefer teamed up and started virtual book parties on Fridays. You see a photo here of the fifth graders reading to second graders. The next time they get together, it will be the second grader's turn to read to their fifth grade buddies. Students are also supported through social skills and friendship groups as well as, as well as check-in and check-out whereby staff members check in with assigned students on a regular basis to ensure they are doing well academically and socially emotionally. In addition, there is small group support throughout, throughout the day to help with schoolwork and provide interventions. On this slide, you see students engaged in their schoolwork at the Discovery Kids Stop Program. This is a program for students in grades K through five. Students register for either an AM session or a PM session. There are 30 slots available per session and, and each of those sessions right now, about 25 spots are filled. This is a fee-based, scholarships are available, however. Space is limited and it's determined by academic need through teacher referral through the MTSS process. And as you know, we have district-wide homework supports at the elementary level and the secondary level. Uh, an email was sent to elementary teachers the afternoon of the last board meeting, which was December 2nd, asking if they wanted to support students with homework help. By the end of that board meeting, we had a waiting list of teachers who wanted to help out. And since this started uh, about a little over a week ago, participation has ranged from five students in a given session on the first night to close to 30 in a given session as of yesterday. We are seeing more older, we are seeing older students participate more, of course, than younger students, but there is consistent uh, attendance of students in this homework support.
Good evening. I'm going to step in and talk briefly about secondaries. Um, our secondary homework support that's supported by our district began this week. And on its very first day, we had 21 students log in, which I think is pretty amazing for a Monday evening. And the first day of that, participation hovered around 10 yesterday. And we look forward to continuing to serve our students this week through Thursday. And I just want to give a sincere thank you to all of our staff who are giving up their time in the evenings to support our students. Since the fall, looks like our pictures are having some trouble loading. Since the fall, each of our secondary schools have been providing academic and social emotional support options during the school day, after school, in the evenings. Um, oh, there it goes. What you can see here on this slide are some examples of how we organize social opportunities over lunch for our students. Uh, that's that lunch bunch uh, image from North. And how we provide additional academic supports during the day. On the right, you can see the schedule that's from South. These sessions serve during the day as targeted academic supports and students can either self-refer or to select, uh, to attend one of those groups during the work time. So with teacher permission, or a teacher can assign groups to those sessions during a breakout for some extra support. Not featured here are some of the student supports we provide during the day, such as National Honor Society tutoring at Tech and supports from students at Apollo through the Apollo Betterment Committee, which you heard from Principal Fisher a month or so ago. After school, we also have supports at all of our secondaries. Um, here you can see some examples of the unique sessions offered at Apollo, including opportunities to meet with a counselor or content-based support and the way South provides supports after school. And here you can see examples of how they do that in Somali, Spanish, and English, and it goes into the evenings. Additionally, our coaches for activities are providing virtual opportunities for learning skills and team building by providing online fitness plans and social check-ins with teams. We know uh, the academic supports are not the sole needs of our students, our adolescents. And often our social emotional supports are as important, if not more so. And often our social emotional supports are as important, if not more so, at times. At the middle level, we provide a virtual reset room to all of our students and Friday social meets. Our middle school students help determine the topics and they're easily the highlights of the week for the staff who participate. You can, if you want to get really excited sometime to have a conversation with Principal Ebner about her participation in those conversations, her enthusiasm is just contagious. You can also see examples of how Tech High School is offering yoga classes. And both Apollo and Tech offer Friday social sessions for students as well. You heard from a few of our cabinet members and district team through Jason's presentation. But Superintendent Jet actually joined the Tech Tiger Talk last week, which was, of course, a big hit. I do hear he gave a fashion lesson, in addition to leadership and career tips, of course. And we know, we just know our responsibility for students, to students, doesn't lie just in the school day. And all of us are committed to supporting our students academically, emotionally, and socially through these unusual times. And once again, I will now turn the presentation, the school's update, over to Superintendent Jet.
Oh, okay. So I'm hoping that that screen, because I can't see it here, Ryan, it says the return to school. And so, good evening Chair Polri and members of the board. Yep, I'm actually trying to use glasses. I'm trying to figure that out. This is not part of that, that fashion moment that I talked at the Tech Talk. Nope, this is Willie Jet needs glasses, so he's trying to make sure that he does this for his eyes. So with that being said, I'm sure after hearing the governor's announcement this afternoon, people want to know what our return to school plans are. As we shared previously, our commitment is always to return all of our students to in-person learning as soon as it is safe to do so. The plans I will share tonight align with the governor's announcement and were approved by MDH, Minnesota Department of Health, MDE, Minnesota Department of Education, and supported by our local health officials. Next slide, please. We plan to bring our preschool and elementary students and our K through twelve students enrolled in special education alternative programs back to school on January nineteenth. This is the exact model we started the school year with. This is our hybrid model. We have always prioritized our littlest learners as the governor asked us to do. As a reminder, our hybrid model consists of students in preschool will attend school in person two days a week on an alternating A/B rotation. Students in kindergarten through second grade will attend school in person Monday through Thursday and learn from home on Fridays. Students in grades three through five will attend school in person two days a week and on alternating A/B day schedule. They will follow the same rotation as was assigned at the beginning of the school year. Students in special education alternative programs will attend school Monday through Thursday in person and learn from home on Fridays or as individually programmed. Next slide, Ryan. At the secondary level, our plan is to return our secondary students to hybrid learning at the conclusion of trimester two. As shared by governor, by the governor, the Department of Education, and the Department of Health today, districts are required to use the following parameters to determine secondary learning models. Local community health, health data, impact on school communities, and operational challenges. Our secondary students and staff have experience with distance learning and asked for consistency and routine in their school experience thus far this year. They've been using one-to-one devices in school G for years and are comfortable with the distance learning model. From our trimester one surveys, we received the following feedback from staff about distance learning. We are teaching in a synchronous format. Students have a schedule and routine, which gives them and us consistency. Students had expectations and accountability this year. Students and teachers had much more support this year. Flex Fridays are a great way to be able to spend one-on-one time with students who are in need. Also, as you just heard, we have rigorous and varied academic and social emotional supports during the day, after school, and in the evenings. We know some students need additional support beyond those we already provide while in distance learning. So, beginning mid-January, we will offer in-person support on Fridays at each of our secondary schools for limited numbers of students needing academic intervention or social emotional supports. Teachers, families, and even students themselves can refer to administration to recommend attendance at these support sessions. MTSS teams will review these recommendations and invite students in, based on staff capacity. Limited transportation will be available. Now, activities. We know that activities are vital for the social, emotional, and physical well-being of students. And we are glad to announce that the activities for middle and high school will resume January fourth, as allowed by the governor and Minnesota State High School League. We are exploring the possibility of providing transportation to and from after-school activities. And families can anticipate receiving additional details from principals and activities directors soon. Next slide, please. So it says questions, so again, I want to emphasize that we want to bring all our learners back to school in person as soon as it is safe to do so. And our plan provides a phased approach, as required by MDE, MDE, and MDH, and it's supported by our local health officials. So with that, I'm going to say thank you, and I'm going to open it up to.
Natalie, you could start us off.
I don't usually say this, but I have no questions.
Thank you, Natalie. Monica, can you follow suit?
Let's try. So Willie, I do love that Friday thinking for one. Sort of an emotional, I think that that's super cool. Really, really like. I'm, I'm surprised every time with the improvements that we do and with the things that we do improvements for. I'm gonna say to Lori and Marcia, I still love the presentation, still love the videos. I wanted to see another video today. I like the, I like the part of the, the kids learning to get, reading to each other. Looking forward to hear more about the, the, about that, how they go with the second graders bringing to the fifth graders. Things like that. And Lori, I still like the other video and I think that Jason stole a little bit of your video thinking today, but thanks. So yeah, those were my comments and I have no questions then.
Zach, do you have any questions or comments? Hal?
No.
Shannon?
Thank you for the announcement and the heads up so families can prepare and know what's coming and make appropriate choices to plan this out and glad there's, and insight.
And Shannon, just to add to that, as we are in conversation right now, our communications team, Tammy Deland, they are releasing this, so families are receiving this by email and by all the different notification systems, our staff is receiving that, and also the different media outlets are being bombarded at this moment also.
Thank you. Willie, good presentation, Lori, Marcia, great, great news. I enjoy them all the time. Willie, would you mind putting those glasses on one more time, please?
There they go.
Okay, you know me, I'm a movie buff. That is The Matrix right there.
Hey, wait a minute.
Just like the glasses on The Matrix.
And so I can't see what this will look like, but if I'm doing The Matrix, there's the dance. There you go.
And we've seen video of you dancing.
Oh, shoot. Well, I'll have to take care of those.
All right. Thank you very much. We will move on to discussion and action item. It's approval of the final levy certification. This is going to be done by Amy Scullarood, Executive Director of Finance and Business Services.
Good evening Chair Polri, Superintendent Jet, members of the board. I'm waiting for Ryan to get the presentation up. But I'll start by going into the requirements of the levy process. So you may recall in, back in September, we came to the board for approval of the preliminary levy. That's always done in September. And then the final certification always waits until December so that in the event a school district has either an operating or a capital bond question on the November election ballot. That way, those approved increases can get reflected in the final levy. We did not have any questions, so our final levy, as we'll see in a minute, looks very similar to the preliminary. Ryan, you can go to the next slide. So in December, there's statutory requirements to hold a truth and taxation hearing, which is essentially what we're doing tonight. That can be part of a regular board meeting. There's a number of things that you have to go through at the truth and taxation hearing. You go over the proposed changes and reason for changes in the levy. It's the 2020 pay, 2021 levy that we're looking at. There's also a requirement to review the current year budget, which we will just go over quickly. Obviously, the board has seen that in full detail when they approved it last spring. And then there's also a time for public comment and questions. We did indicate that questions could be submitted through our normal requests for public comment electronically. There were no levy-related questions that were, were received. But when we get to the end of the presentation, if there's anybody who's come to the meeting for public comment, we will open it up at that time. Next slide. So the tax, the school district levy is actually kind of operates in delay. So taxes levied in the fall of 2020, so where we are right now, are payable collected in 2021 and then actually recognized as revenue in the 2021, 2022 school year. So the amounts that we're looking at tonight won't actually be reflected until the fiscal year 2022 budget. And the levy is broken down into three components. There's the general fund, which is the most significant portion of the levy, and that is primarily based on student enrollment. There's the community education fund levy, which is for the most part based on the population of the district. And then if we flip to the next slide, the third component of the levy is the debt service fund levy. And that's based on the actual principal and interest retirement schedules for any debt that the district has. Generally, that's voter-approved debt for construction. And the levy is actually set at an amount five percent over those required payments just to account for delinquents uncollected and to ensure that the district doesn't end up in a situation where they may have bond payments that exceed the amount of revenue that came in in a, in a given year. If that five percent ends up not being needed and the fund balance in the debt service fund starts to build up what is referred to as an excess fund balance, then they'll do future adjustments to take that away. And when we get to the debt service fund levy that we're approving tonight, you'll see that's actually the case. We have a decrease coming in the levy because of some of those adjustments. Next slide. And so here's the breakdown in terms of the levy and how much of the levy is attributed to each of the three components. Again, general fund is the most significant portion. The general fund does also include our long-term facilities maintenance levy. That, so in total, general fund levies are approximately fifty-six percent of the total. Community education is relatively small at four point two percent. And then the debt service fund remainder is thirty-nine percent. And again, those percents are very similar to last year. Community education is actually exactly the same. And then there was a slight decrease in the percentage for debt service and a corresponding increase in general fund. Next slide. So the, in total, our levy this year is actually decreasing just slightly. Approximately a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which equates to a point five seven three percent decrease. And again, very similar to what the board approved at the preliminary levy in September. It's a slight increase of approximately two thousand seven hundred dollars. And really, that was just some adjustments in some of the calculations that MDE did in between the preliminary levy. Our preliminary levy, based on our, our meeting schedule, which we'll talk to a little later when we talk about the meeting dates, is fairly early in terms of how quickly our approval comes after MDE starts to release reports. And so sometimes things aren't, aren't completely worked out, but it did end up being fairly, fairly close. We, I do want to point out that the percent that our levy goes down in terms of a dollar amount that we're levying doesn't necessarily correlate to what will happen with individuals' taxes. There's a lot of factors that go into that, including property value, what happens with the overall tax base. And we'll get to that and have some examples of what that tax impact might look like a little later. Next slide. So as required, we are gonna just show quickly the total general fund or all funds budget for the 2020, 21 current fiscal year. I know those numbers might be a little hard to, to read on the screen, but you'll see in total, all funds, just over a hundred and sixty-two point six million in total revenue. And then down at the bottom, you'll see just under a hundred and seventy-three million in total expense. So really very, very balanced in terms of the revenue, the revenue and expense. And we can go to the next slide. And then if we break that down by component, you can see here, again, the sources of revenue that are coming in. And really, the very, the largest portion of the pie there is the revenue from state sources. We talk about this every year when we approve the budget, that really the majority of our revenue across all funds comes from the state. And so taxes is, the levy is really a relatively speaking, a small portion of our funding source. Next slide. And then here we show revenue by fund. So again, the largest portion of the revenue coming in is the general fund, which is to be expected. You see the blue slice there is the special revenue funds, which is the community education, debt service fund, and then the little tiny sliver is the capital projects fund. If we looked back a year to two years ago, we'd see that capital projects fund as we had the tech money sitting there and we were collecting interest on that, we would have a significantly larger portion of that revenue coming in, in that fund as that project and those funds are nearing the end. We'll see that start to basically get down to, to very little. And eventually, once there's no bond proceeds remaining in that fund, that would drop off. Next slide. So very similar, you'll notice this looks very similar to the revenue one. Expenditures by fund, again, proportionate, which generally, unless you have a large capital project going on, you would expect to see your revenue and your expenses be proportionate when you compare it across the funds. Capital projects fund again will drop off when those remaining bond proceeds have been spent. Next slide. And then just quickly looking at the general fund, again, the general fund is the biggest component of the school district budget. And so we just show a, a presentation that breaks it down by category. And if you go to the next slide, it's a little bit easier to see it in, in more of a visual representation. The three components that are kind of in the bottom left of the, of the picture are our instructional categories, so regular instruction, special education instruction, and vocational instruction. You'll notice those make up the majority, about sixty-four percent of the total district budget in those direct instruction categories. Next slide. So levies are determined, how are they determined? They can be set by state formula, which the majority of our levies fall into that category, or they can vote, be voter-approved. The voter-approved can be either for operating in the form of an operating referendum, or they can be for capital projects, which would come through in the way of a debt service levy. Next slide. So the general fund levy, what we're looking at here is the comparison of the levy that was approved last year, which is the 2019 pay, 2020 levy compared to the 2020 pay, 2021 levy, which is what we're seeking approval for tonight. So the general fund component of the levy actually has a slight increase of about forty-four thousand. The majority of that coming in the long-term facilities maintenance levy, which was intentional. The, if you recall, when we talked about this, Board Finance Committee had recommended doing an increase so that that, that we keep that levy up with inflationary costs and we make sure we have enough funding to do the projects that we need to do. With the levy being set based on enrollment, you'll see that the, the largest components of the general fund levy, which show up on lines two and, or sorry, lines three and four, actually have decreases because it's tied to enrollment. And so we, like most districts, have seen an enrollment decline this year. And so we, like most districts, have seen an enrollment decline this year. And so there's some negative levy adjustments that are tied to enrollment that are offsetting that long-term facilities maintenance increase. Next slide. Community education, again, this is primarily tied to population versus enrollment, which is why you don't see, you know, any significant change, very similar to last year. And then next slide. And then the last component is the debt service levy. And again, this is where we have a decrease because of that excess debt fund balance adjustment. And so really, we have enough of a decrease in the debt service levy to offset the full increase in the general fund component and then some. So on the next slide, it will show what that means in terms of the total levy comparison. And again, like we mentioned earlier, it's going down by about 0.57%, which is 175,455. On the next slide, we show some historical comparisons of our levies for the last five years. As you can see, community education is very flat. That levy is is very consistent year over year. And really, for the last four years, the general fund and the debt service fund levies have been pretty consistent. You kind of see a slight trend in the general fund going up a little bit as the debt service has been going down each of the last five years with those excess fund balance adjustments. And then, of course, the debt service levy had the large increase between the 2017 and 18 levy years with the approval of the tech bond. Next slide. So when we set our levy, we levy a dollar amount. But that doesn't necessarily, the percent that our dollar amount of our levy is changing doesn't necessarily correlate directly with what an individual taxpayer might see on their property tax statement. There's a number of variables that can cause tax increases and decreases. Changes in market values are out of our control. Same thing with changes in in class rates or or different legislation that might change how taxes are calculated. Voter approved referendums obviously would be something we would initiate. There can also be state tax adjustments or new programs that might come through by way of legislation that allow for additional levy authority. There aren't any of those new programs or significant levy changes that we have to be aware of tonight. Next slide. Changes in market value. So the market value is going to be the the primary driving factor in what an individual taxpayer would be paying for their total taxes, but you know, specifically, we're talking about the school portion of their taxes. Those tax statements come from the town from the county. They're not subject for a discussion this evening. We don't set those valuations. That's all done at the county level. And so if somebody were to come for public comment, specifically regarding their property tax valuation, that is not something that we would address or make comment on because that is out of our out of our control. Next slide. One other thing that can affect individual tax liabilities is the overall tax base of the community. So this shows a historical perspective. You can kind of see there's been a number of trends. If we go back to the early 2000s, there were some years with some significant double-digit percent increases. And then that started to to decline to close to zero with a few years, followed by a few years of valuation declines. And since that time now, in the last seven years or so, it's been starting to slowly slowly go up and actually the overall tax base increase for tax capacity going into the taxes payable for 2021 is the largest increase that we've seen really since back in 2007. And so that will impact the values. If we go to the next slide. And so again, this might be a little bit hard to see, but this is essentially showing what would happen to someone's taxes based on the amount that we levied if valuations for people's homes stayed zero. If there was no increase in tax base and there was no increase in your property value, our levy, even though on paper it's only going down in terms of dollar amount by 0.5%. If all other things were held constant, an individual taxpayers' school portion of their tax liability would actually be going down 6%. Now, we know that's probably not realistic, that if the overall market value and tax base is increasing 5%, it's probably more likely, and if we flip to the next slide, that people's individual valuations on their tax statements have gone up. So this information shows what those tax changes would be at varying price points. We're using as what's highlighted, which is a $200,000 valued home, just as the example. But you can see what that would equate to for a number of different valuation amounts. So this assumes that that average taxpayer's valuation is going to go up 5%. And so even with that 5% increase, there's enough of an increase in the overall tax base that at pretty much every price point, taxes are either holding flat or having a slight decrease. Next slide. And then the last slide is just showing where our levy compares in terms of some of our neighboring districts. Interestingly enough, many districts are seeing enrollment declines. And so you'll see that not unlike us, Suck Rapids and Sartell do have decreases in their levy. The yellow line on the graph is the the current levy that's being approved. The brown line was last year's levy. So Mercury is the only district that isn't having a decrease. They also notice on the chart that the St. Cloud School District levy is considerably lower than all of our surrounding districts. So that is the end of the presentation. So before we get to the approval, I'll turn it back over to Jeff. And we can either do questions, if there's questions from board members, we can either do that before or after the public comment.
I'm gonna look out into the audience. There's pretty good crowd tonight. Is there anyone that wants public input? I see a couple of people shaking their head, no. All right, anyone? Third time anyone, okay. Now we will open it up to the board members. Natalie, could you please lead as if you have any questions or comments?
For the second time in a row, I have no questions or comments.
Monica?
Hi, Mr. Chair. I do appreciate the jokes, but for being faithful to the audience watching us, could you please state who is in the audience right now? Thank you.
Names of people, there's one individual. All right, next up would be Zach. Anything, Zach, any comments on it? Al, you're next, any comments?
Yeah, I have a question, Amy. If the if the tax capacity increases, we levy a dollar amount, correct?
Yes.
So if the tax capacity increases, wouldn't property taxes drop greater than if you held them constant?
It really, so that's a tricky question. It really depends on why the tax capacity increases. If the tax capacity increases because a new major employer comes in, then yes. If the tax capacity increases by 5% because the values of everyone's home and businesses proportionately increase 5%, then no. So it really kind of depends on what's driving the increase in tax capacity. But usually, in a large area like like St. Cloud, it's a combination of both. It's partially due to individual increases in existing homes. And then there's also, you know, the component of new homes, new business.
Again, we levy a dollar amount, not a we levy a dollar amount, not a percent. So if the values of the homes go up, the dollar amount stays constant. Taxes are gonna be less, not more. We're gonna have to talk about it offline because I I'm not following that one. It doesn't, that doesn't make sense to me. But it seems to me like that calculation should have gone exactly the opposite way, that taxes would actually be dropping if the capacity goes up. So it either way. But we'll have to have that conversation because I I'm not calculating that one in my head. I'm pretty good at math.
All right, Shannon, any comments or questions? I also have none. I've seen this before, so thank you, Amy, for a great presentation. We are looking for a motion.
Jeff, I would move that we approve the final levy certification pay 2020 pay 2021.
All right, do I have a second?
I second.
That would be a third, I think Zach beat you to it, Monica. Thanks, though. Shannon, would you take role, please?
Jeff Polaris?
Yes.
Monica Sigur-Shorts?
Yes.
Al Bellwood?
Yes.
Shannon Hines, yes. Natalie Rings, no?
Yes.
And Zach Rolle?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Amy. Amy's up again. The next one is item B, it's approval of lease to relocate our Riverwoods program. And it will be done by Amy, Executive Director of Finance and Business Services.
Thank you. So just to provide a little bit of background to board members and for anyone in the public who might be watching, the Riverwoods School is located at the St. Cloud Children's Home property. And that the the program that we house there is our middle level, Level Four EBD specialty program. We have been leasing space at the St. Cloud Children's Home Campus for a number of years. Up until a few years ago, Catholic Charities was also running a care and treatment program, both residential and day treatment on the site. There is still some some day treatment programming that we provide education to those students as well, but that is minimal. The majority of the programming onsite is for that Level Four program. The after Catholic Charities stopped doing the care and treatment program, the diocese did list the property on the market. And so it's been for sale now for a number of years. And then just recently, within the last month or so, the property actually sold. And so with the property selling, our existing lease with the St. Cloud Diocese that owned the home previously automatically transfers to the new owner. And the new owner about three weeks ago gave the district a 90-day notice that they were terminating the lease, which means obviously we we need to have a a home for that program after mid-February when the lease is set to expire. And so the district has been working with our realtor to identify potential space. We also explored the possibility of housing that program in one of our existing buildings, which particularly, given the space constraints that buildings are facing with with COVID and trying to distance as much as possible, really wasn't a viable option. Good news is that we have identified a space to lease for the short term. So the lease term would be from January 1st through June 30th, the end of the school year. And the lease rate is actually the same as what we were paying at Riverwoods. The owner of the property agreed to just transfer forward that same monthly lease rate amount. And so the lease agreement is attached. So again, there's no financial impact because the lease rate stays the same as what we were already leasing. The lease is part of our levy, actually, it's part of the lease levy. And so again, no financial impact. And we're just looking for a motion to approve the lease.
All right, do any questions, Natalie, before we?
I do not have any questions.
Monica?
So thank you very much, Amy, for that. I am the, what does this imply for our districts? And maybe a question for Carol, for our students, the change of location and when is this going to be?
Yeah, so this will actually take effect, the lease takes effect January 1st. And so with the with, that gives us a few weeks while all students are still in distance learning, like Superintendent Jett just went through in his report. And so at this point, the timing actually works out well that we're not transitioning them twice. Our intent is that when those students return from distance learning, they would return to the new site versus having them go back to the Riverwood site for, you know, essentially three or four weeks and then try to transition. And so it it worked out good in terms of timing that they'll just have that one transition. And we're gonna do our best once that that January 1st lease date starts to get the space ready so that, you know, because we need to do some cleaning and staff obviously need to pack and move. But our goal would be to get students in that same day that other students return. Carol, anything you wanted to add?
No, I think you just asked, Monica, you know, what are the implications for the staff moving? Is that correct?
For the students.
Well, students and staff, yes. And so this program, they have moved a few times in between buildings on the Riverwoods campus. And so they are quite adept at packing boxes quickly and going to another space. And so I, you know, they're gonna be fine. They're really excited actually to investigate a new space and perhaps development, develop some new programming in a new space. And so I I think they're gonna be doing very well with it.
Thank you. No more questions?
Zach, any questions? Al? Shannon?
No.
All right, thank you very much. I'm looking for a motion to accept the lease for Riverwoods program as we just discussed.
I move to accept.
Thank you, Monica. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Natalie, please. Shannon, could you take role, please?
Zach Rolle? Natalie Rings, no?
Yes.
Shannon Hines, yes. Al Bellwood?
Yes.
Monica Sigur-Shorts?
Yes.
And Jeff Polaris?
Yes. Thank you, Amy, thank you, Carol. Next up, it'd be item C, secondary online academi, academic, academy proposal. It's gonna be done by Lori Post, Executive Director of Learning and Teaching, and Jessica Moore, Director of Secondary Curriculum.
Good evening, Chair Polaris, School Board Members and Superintendent Jett. I have the easy part of tonight's presentation, and that's to introduce to you Jessica Moore, who is the Director of our Secondary Curriculum. Jessica and a team that includes Ryan Cox have been working on an application to submit for a virtual academy for the next school year. What we will be seeking at the end of the presentation is a motion and a recommended approval to submit the application to the state for a virtual academy for next year. So I'm gonna turn it over to Jessica.
Thank you very much, Lori, and thank you Superintendent Jett and Chair Polaris and School Board Members. I am really excited to be here to talk to you today about all the work we've been putting into this and giving you a little taste of what's to come. I am the Director of Secondary Curriculum, and I did teach in this district for 10 years. So I have a a lot of ties and a lot of heart invested in this. Ryan, pop it along. Our, what we were tasked with was to look at what it would take to create an online secondary school for grades six through 12. And the MDE application, which is more than 20 pages that we were digging into and really made us stop and think about why we were doing this. Ryan? When I say we, I'm referring to the fact there's a core group of us that met two to three times a week and included myself, the Director of Technology, Ryan Cox, the Executive Director of Assessment, Dr. Sylvia Huff, Director of Special Education, Beth Watkins, our multilingual learner secondary coordinator, Graham Litterist, and various building administration, including Brenda Tyber. We had an expanded group that came as ABLE, and we contacted it as ABLE, which included families and students, teachers, our student support team, the Equity Department, Guidance Counselors, and of course, Business Services. For stakeholders feedback, we did include a question specifically on the survey that went out to all parties about their interest in an online school. And we also had conversations with people at every level. And it had an open forum for teachers on the 13th of November and one for students on the 25th. I do want to note the 25th of November was the day before break. And we still have students show up and some families show up to talk about what their thoughts were. We had our VCR members as well have input on what we would offer at the school, what their thoughts were around the school. Our VCR members are building content representatives, so they are leaders within the district. Our VCR members are building content representatives, so they are leaders within the district in every content area. So they had a lot of discussions, um, within, with the coordinators as well as with one another at the building level. Ryan? So what makes us different? Uh, this was a question that actually is on the application, and it took us a good three meetings to really wrap our head around what we want to offer, um, based on what we're hearing from stakeholders as well as what we were seeing. So we wanted, I know you can read, but I'm gonna read this one to you. We wanted to make personalized learning that includes flexible learning opportunities, working towards standards mastery that happens synchronously and asynchronously. If you can inclusive environment with access to special education and multilingual learner programming, and all graduation courses will be offered with limited elective options. Ryan? So for personalized learning, we're referring to the fact we'd want to make sure our students have a connection with a mentor. So they would have someone if they are online the whole time, um, all four years. Because we know that that connection makes a difference, especially as Principal Harris talked about, that connection really makes a difference as to student success. They would build their pathway and they would adjust it together because how they come to us as ninth graders is not always how they leave us as 12th graders. With all the experiences they have, uh, they change their dreams and their vision. And this would be a pathway that we, we would continue to monitor and adjust. We would want to do a graduation capstone portfolio presentation where they would invite in, uh, members of the community, their mentor, uh, people who helped their journey along the way and be able to talk about where, why they are where they are and where they're planning to go. Next slide. So for flexible learning, we re- referring to the fact that we know both synchronous and asynchronous opportunities are important in an online learning environment. And we're moving towards standards mastery means a student could go faster than they would in traditional brick and mortar school. Because if they're able to obtain that, that mastery because it's their passion or their interest, or they, they just understand this material so well, they could go through it a little bit faster. And their attendance would be connected with progress towards graduation. So they would, um, not have to come every day to class. The class would be offered. They would be able to do it in a way, manner that works for them. Ryan? It'd be an inclusive environment with special education programming and multilingual learner programming happening. When we were listing what courses we thought would work, um, it was very helpful to have Beth Watkins there and Graham Litterist to have the conversations around the fact that it's programming that these positions have. And we'd want to, for the students who need that information or need that programming, make sure we're giving them what they need. So the wording in the application is very general around that and talks about the fact that we would meet the, meet the student needs. Next slide. For student support, we'd have personalized, a personalized learning plan. They would have their mentor, and of course, we'd have that wraparound support with MTSS. Um, our Guidance Counselors are always there to work with our students, and they would also have support from a media specialist, which they would use for any technology pieces, literacy, of course, we want our students still reading. And they would have extra, um, technology support because technology glitches happen. We have learned a lot since we started our distance learning 2.0, and one of the things for those other learning hubs that were created, and that'd be something that we want to continue and we continue to promote for our students. Our students, of course, could always come into the brick and mortar schools as well if they wanted to work with people, um, live and face to face. Ryan? For faculty support, we'd have ongoing professional learning. We know that online learning looks different than, um, in-person learning. And because of that, we would continue to help our, our teachers who are doing amazing jobs and doing a great job at going out and finding, um, professional development and ta- taking advantage of professional development that we're offering on online learning. We would follow the state guidelines on class sizes and would keep their workload balanced. They too would have support from technology as well as a media specialist because that's usually the first person they go to, uh, for curriculum issues. For families and guardian support, we'd have very clear onboarding. One of our recommendations would be to make sure that people who are choosing this option understand what this option is and just do a pre-assessment. It isn't anything that they would be tied to. It wouldn't make them no longer be a part of it. It would be a way for them to stop and assess, is this the right choice for me? Because we know online learning is not for everyone, but we do have people that are thriving in it, and we do have people who, who desperately want it. Um, we have very clear communication loops, and of course, once again, our Guidance Counselors are our first faces with families. So they would have that support as well as a connection with the mentor. Additional recommendations that we had after, uh, many meetings and many conversations is that while we're applying for a 612 school, we'd want to start 912. We know that the middle level has different developmental needs than the high school level. And we want to make sure that, that we get all the kinks worked out before we start adding scaffolds into that middle level. We also would like to offer supplemental and comprehensive high school opportunity. Uh, because we know that some classes, they may want to take in brick and mortar school, or students who are in our brick and mortar schools may want to pop onto an online class for whatever reason. Ryan? Um, as, as mentioned, that's classes may be taken at brick and mortar schools and the online school. Uh, part of that is when we were talking with our content areas about what would be a good, good class to have online. Uh, like you saw at Tech, they have their big bill. That would not be a good online class. And yet if it was something that the student really wanted to take, they're passionate about, they could absolutely take it at the brick and mortar school at Tech, and they could still take the rest of their courses online. They would also be able to participate in athletics and activities at their brick and mortar school. We know that the importance that comes with the arts and with sporting events, and we want, want them to continue to have that information or have that ability. Our next steps, as mentioned by Lori Post, is that we need to turn this application into the Minnesota Department of Education for approval. And it is a 90-day window. So once they get it, they have 90 days to let us know what they think. We're hoping that if they get it now for the new year, we might be able to make a phone call or two to help try to push it along. Um, as you know, we have registration coming for our students, and if this ends up being an option, this would be something we want to have our families to know or have our families know now. And with that, uh, I open it up for any questions, and I am absolutely reserving the right to tag Ryan Cox in. If there's a technical question I need help with.
Natalie, could you please start us off?
Um, luckily, I was able to hear about this at our Achievement Integration and Equity Committee, so I had all my questions answered then. So I'll throw it back to you, Chair Polaris. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you, Natalie. Monica, were you, any questions?
I also saw in the Achievement Integration Committee, but I do want to add that, eh, the, the day, the Friday day that Jason was saying today, uh, I know, I know you include, you put some one-on-one coaching, but this one is like a group thing. And I really, really encourage to include some grouping, group thing, the, between the, the present, eh, the, the classes. I, I think that kids needs to be more together, not just with the coach.
Oh, absolutely.
Zach, any comments or questions? Al? Shannon?
I'm good.
Jessica, I just had a couple, and it might be few. It might be for Amy. Uh, is there a mechanism in place for the students that aren't meeting benchmarks that aren't cutting it? I mean, can they jump back in? Who determines that?
Uh, I'm glad that you asked that question, and I will definitely, uh, let anyone, Lori Post, jump in if you'd like to. When we were talking about it, we were referring, we knew the fact that students, if they are struggling in the brick and mortar school, they would have to some additional supports. And so if we had someone struggling in the online school, it would probably go that same path. We were offering additional supports, more synchronous time, and would do that MTSS wraparound of, of doing everything we can to keep them in the environment that they want to be in, or probably want to be in. Um, because if that is their option, I think it's family choice. Lori, would you say anything different on that?
No, I would agree with that, that we would never, um, hold a student to that choice if it's not one that they're being successful in.
Lori, is that transition back to the brick and mortar, is it possible? Is it easy? Is it? Do we have a, a vision on how that would look? Or to be determined?
I think some of that is to be determined, you know, and Lori Putnam, you might want to chime in too. I think we would, you know, hope that it would happen at trimester time. That's the easiest time for those transitions to happen. Um, and we would probably have them do the application for change that our assistant superintendents look at if they're changing from one program or one building to another. Lori, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, is that we would follow the in-district transfer process that the board established.
Thank you, ladies. Uh, my last question, um, additional staff? Is we're gonna need more media, more teachers? Is it existing staff?
I'm not sure if I'm the right one to answer this, but I can sure go for it. I, we, if it's our students, we just have some shifting, shifting of staff going. Is there any other way that we would look at that?
Yeah, we would staff the Distance Learning Academy in the same way as we staff our brick and mortar schools. It would depend on the enrollments and then, um, matching the number of teachers to the enrollment at the school.
Awesome. Thank you, ladies. Um, we will be looking for a motion, and I want the board to make sure that the motion that I'm looking for is for submitting the application only. This board, along with the new member, will decide if we're going to actually have the academy at a future date. So right now I am looking for a motion. So the application for secondary online academy can be submitted. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Natalie. Do I have a second?
I second.
Zach? It'll be Zach or Monica, either one. Um, all right, could you please take role, Shannon?
Zach Rolle?
Yes.
Natalie Ringsford?
Yes.
Shannon Hawes is yes. Al Delwood?
Yes.
Monica Segura-Shorts?
Yes.
And Jeff Polaris?
Yes. All right, thank you for that nice presentation. We will jump on to item D. It's, uh, Proposed Revised Board Policy 601, School District Curriculum and Instructional Goals. It's up for a second reading. It's gonna be done by Lori Post, Executive Director of Learning and Teaching, and Carol Potter, Executive Director of Special Education and Student Services.
Good evening, Chair Polaris. I'm gonna jump in on this one first. This is the second reading. And this policy, if you recall, last meeting, we had our wonderful dyslexia presentation. Um, and updated our dyslexia specialists, updated everybody on, um, where we were at, and we are making great strides in our, uh, dyslexia, uh, pieces. And so this policy, the majority of it, um, this time around for this update includes all of those dyslexia pieces that you heard about in the presentation last time. After we presented, or after the dyslexia specialist presented their policy, or their presentation, we did the first reading of this policy, which included those dyslexia pieces. I didn't have any follow-up questions on the dyslexia pieces. Were there any other questions tonight with the new pieces that were added? And it was all of the statute pieces that were added in this policy.
All right, Lori, anything to add before we open it up for questions?
No.
All right. Once again, Natalie, any questions?
No questions for me.
Thank you, Natalie. Monica?
No.
Zach? Al? Shannon?
No.
I don't either. All right, we are, thank you very much. We'll look forward to the third reading next meeting.
Thank you.
Next up is item E, Proposed Revised Board Policy 616. It's School District System Accountability. It also is up for a second reading. It's gonna be done by Lori Post, Executive Director of Learning and Teaching.
We also did not receive any additional feedback after the first reading on this. And if you remember, the majority of the changes in here were to change the name of the Advisory Council, um, to include the statute around the world's best workforce language. The one change that we did make was on page three, and it was 3A. And if you remember, we had the title of the committee in there twice. So we removed that second repeat of the title. But otherwise, there were no additional changes.
All right, ready for questions? Okay, Natalie, any questions for this one?
No.
Monica, how about you?
No questions.
Zach? Al? Shannon?
No.
My neck's getting a workout tonight. Um, no questions for me also. Thank you, ladies. We will move on to the next section. It is item F, Proposed Revised Board Policy Number 203.2, Order of the Regular School Board Meeting. It's gonna be by Shannon Hawes, Chair of the Board Development Policy and Governance Committee. It's also a second read.
The Board Policy Committee is recommending that we remove the commitment to which Wednesdays are on the policy 203.2. The school board member, um, dates for the year are released at the reorg meeting in January of every year. And then the board meeting dates are posted on the website. So to the policy 203.2, uh, it's not necessary to put a date on there as to which Wednesday because some months change particularly due to holidays. So we're asking for approval to just cross that portion off about whether it's the first Wednesday or the third Wednesday. Any questions?
Natalie?
No, thank you.
Monica?
No, no questions.
Zach? Al? Shannon? I did have some questions, Shannon. Um, the dates have to be set at the reorg meeting. And it looks, and what I'm hearing and seeing is that we're gonna go with the first and third Wednesdays like we are now except for just September to have a levy?
I think Willie is going to speak on that.
Okay.
I don't see him.
Second thing, um, it talks about order of the regular school board meeting, but when you look at what our meetings are called, how does that affect our non-regular school board meeting? Want to include the work session? Or am I?
It has the work session under, um, it's not pulled up, is it? So the, can you see the board policy?
No, no, I, I don't. I don't have it on.
I don't know if Ryan can pull it up right now.
Can you just look at that later and make sure that?
It's on my computer. So it has the board meeting and then the works, the work session here.
What is that board meeting called?
Well, they're both regular board meetings, and it's duplicated here.
Okay, that is the title for both?
Well, you're right.
There's no, there's no business down in the work session. As long as the title for both is regular, regular, and one happens to include the work session, we're okay. I just saw that it was like, it might actually be called one different.
Okay, so I could comment on it because I have it in front of me here. The, the board meeting that does not include the work session is being called the regular board meeting. And the board meeting that does include the work session is being called board meeting. Slash work, board meeting slash work session. And then the other one is called regular board meeting and no work session.
Can they both be called regular meeting?
Except for it's not a board meeting because it's a board meeting slash work session.
Okay. All right, I'm really nitpicking at it. It looks good. All right, any other questions before we move on? Yes, Willie?
I'm not, I, can you see me? Because Shannon said she couldn't see me.
I can now, the one, the screen was off.
Okay, so Shannon, I think you asked, um, I think you said my name in terms of you were trying to see what the administration's viewpoint or thoughts were? I think that's true. Okay. And so from a administration standpoint, the, our, our request or what we would, um, suggest for us as administration in terms of the, the order and the way that it falls on the calendar, we would keep it the same as it is now. We, when we look at the one thing that we would change, um, is the, Amy's sitting there, the meeting that's in September. And so that's the one, instead of making some other adjustments, when, if we got ready to flip it the other way, we would recommend, or it would be nice for us to keep it the same way that it is and adjust that one meeting. And Amy, is it in September? Is that the one that we're talking about?
Yes, it's the September regular meeting, so the second meeting in September.
Okay. And so for, for us, that, that's feasible, that's doable for us. And if it was just us choosing it, that's what we would say. Um, but I know that this is a board discussion, so.
So right now, we're discussing just crossing out the commitment of putting it on the board policy of the first Wednesday unless otherwise noted. I don't even know where it's noted. Um, so we want to get rid of that. And then going, following administration's recommendations at the board reorg meeting, as usual, when we release a full as usual, when we release a full 12 months' worth of dates for board meetings, we would go off of administration of keeping it on the first and the third, except for September. And then that will be posted on the district website as usual.
All right, thank you very much.
Third reading will be after the reorg. Until the policy changes, it's first and last, unless otherwise noted. September will be otherwise noted, so we're good. Last is a second. Okay, next up, item A, 4A is Superintendent Report. It's going to be done by Willie Jett, Superintendent of District 742 Schools.
Chair Polaris, Member of the Board, thank you very much for the opportunity to give you my superintendent's report. So, yeah, all right. With that being said, thought I had not hit the mute button. I first and foremost want to say congratulations to the following student athletes for being named to the All Metro Teams for the extended fall season. Apollo Volleyball, Noel Hakimullah and Paige Cox. Tech Volleyball, Sarah Harris. Tech Football, Katavion Norwood, otherwise known as KT, Spencer Guston, Don Caver, and Isaac Sipple. For Apollo Football, Ishmael Hall, Thomas Do, and Patrick Noya. Next, I'd like to say congratulations to Tech's Spencer Guston for his selection to the Class 5A Individual Academic All-State Team. And next, and this one is, we always talk about what happens when students leave us and go out into the world. And this young lady made sure that she sent me a text and got ahold of me to let me know what was happening in her life. So Apollo graduate, Laraya Washington, who plays for Eastern Illinois University. She scored 22 points against our University of Minnesota Gophers. The reason that I fired right back at Laraya was previously, and the reason that she sent me that, was two nights before that against the school that I used to go to, an alma mater. She scored 18 points and 12 rebounds against the University of Illinois at Chicago. So Laraya, yes, we mentioned you during our board meeting. We never forget you. And last but not least, the District 742 Local Education and Activities Foundation has announced that it received a $41,000 grant from the Morgan Family Foundation for the purpose of supporting the District 742 Partners and Kids Counting a Lot Together, the PACT-CAT program. This grant will allow the PACT-CAT program to expand in all District 742 preschool locations and will provide support for our PACT-CAT in the summertime roll and read bus. And lastly, just want to say wonderful, I hope everybody has a wonderful holiday break or winter break for our community out at at-large, and for the 742 community, and for all board members. And that concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you, Willie. We will now jump into the Board of Education reports. Finance and Audit Committee, Al, you're first.
Okay, so Finance and Audit Committee met on December 10th. First item on the agenda was the Riverwoods Program relocation. Amy gave a pretty good indication of what that was about. So I'm not going to go through all of that. And we do have, at the end of this meeting, we have a closed meeting to discuss the property and what we want to do with it going forward and possible, possible purchase of the building. Second thing on the agenda was a discussion, a short discussion about district attorneys and our selection process for that. Part of the deal is that at every reorganization meeting, we always get a list of attorneys and we just basically vote yes to accept them. And there was some discussion on how we go about choosing those attorneys and if we get competitive bidding and things like that. Third was a gymnastics update. Willie spoke with the gymnastics coach about what would, what would we need, what would need to be considered if the program stays at the current location. The considerations he mentioned were transportation to and from the School of Dance, training room supplies such as tape, ice machine, et cetera. School of Dance is already putting in an ice machine. Technology needed and to increase the amount of space we lease for locker rooms and bleachers. Willie is exploring the operation, or the opportunity for a longer lease. And lastly, we had a fairly short discussion on board compensation. And Amy reviewed a handout with information from other school districts about board compensation. Our current compensation is $770 per month for the board chair and $670 per month for the remaining members. Committee discussed. The amounts are taken to the board reorganization meeting and a motion would have to be made to change them. So we should, we can forward that, actually, information. There was an information chart that showed us compared, in comparison to other districts and where we fall, and I can forward that to everybody. And you can think about it. One of the things that we did discuss is possibly tying the recommended change to the average of all of the bargaining groups for the previous year. So instead of coming there and saying, well, we think it should just be this, or picking a number out of thin air, tie it to what, so if the bargain, if the average increase, and Amy, I can send this also, but Amy did a chart for last year, I believe it was 2.1%. When you averaged all of the bargaining groups, then we would make, that would be the proposed increase at the reorg meeting. Part of the discussion is just, it isn't necessarily fair to always say, no, we're not going to take any increase. And it's always very difficult to settle or to come up with what that, what is fair. Because it can be, I mean, the amounts are so small, a 2% increase on $670 is what, $6, $7, something like that? It's not, it's not a big amount of money. But the 2% increase, if we go out and say a $50 increase, then all of a sudden, that's an 8% or 10% increase, and that doesn't seem fair to the bargaining groups. So we can, we can talk about that, we can have a discussion about it. But a motion would have to be made to make any changes at the reorganization meeting. And that was it.
Thank you, Al. Uh, next up, Zach, do you have any for legislation? Legislation? There is no report from personnel, there is no report from board development policy. Natalie, do you have one for Achievement, Integration, Equity Committee?
Yes, thank you, Chair. We did meet and we talked over three different things. One was the strategic board, strategic plan, whoa, strategic plan board presentation that is going to be coming to us soon. We saw the presentation, gave some feedback, asked some questions, kind of talked through how is that going to work since we are now on a rolling schedule for our strategic plan. We also talked about career pathways. Heard some updates and some exciting updates, actually, in this area that the board will be hearing in the new year as well. And then we did a quick, very quick review of our committee purpose and structure. We changed the, our committee goals this year a bit already, so we didn't have to do a very deep dive on that. And in January, we'll be talking about what our committee's schedule looks like for this year for presentations and talking points. So thank you, Chair Polaris. That's all I have.
Thank you, Natalie. I just want to add my own little District 742 family update because it's my last board meeting, so I'm going to get away with this. I just want to send congratulations out to a young lady named Megan Polaris, who happens to be a nurse at Apollo and now the proud parent of a little baby boy yesterday. Rory Oliver Polaris, 7'11", 22 pounds, or 22 inches, so. Shout out to our district staff. All right, thank you much. We will now move into future agenda items. Up in our very busy January meetings will be Approval of High School Registration Handbook, Strategic Plan, World's Best Workforce Plan, Staff Demographic Report, School Updates, Activity Updates, and COVID Update, Proposed Revised Board Policy 601, third reading, Revised Board Policy 616, third reading, Proposed Revised Board Policy 203.2, Order of the Board Meetings, third reading. That will be it for future agenda items. Next up is item number six, Presentation of Plaque to Outgoing Board Member. This will be presented by Vice Chair Shannon Haas.
Tonight marks the last board meeting for our Chair, Jeff Polaris. I had the pleasure of serving four years with him. It's been an excellent four years, a fun time. So we're presenting you the plaque tonight. I am going to miss very much your presence here. I'm very touched by your kindness and your generosity. And I'm always amused by your wit. I will miss you as well as your wife, who is here at the beginning of the meeting. Thank you very much. Four years of joy to be with you and to see your commitment to the district.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you. I think traditionally we go around and... What are you doing?
All right, I'll be glad for punishment. Natalie, do you have any comments?
Is this a roast, or is this supposed to be good?
Yeah, it's a roast. Yeah, it's a roast.
I've been quiet all night because this is where I really shine. No, I'm just kidding. You know, Jeff, it took me a minute to realize that, that your humor was so dry. I mean, so dry, like, oh, he was kidding. But besides that, which we all know and love about you, I just really appreciate who you are and the fact that you're an open book, how you shared with us about your brother. Ooh, that makes me emotional. And, and shared your life with us and, you know, allowed us to, to see you, the human being, and you, the dad, and you, the brother. Just really was a blessing to me. And to get to know you and your wife and your beautiful family just has been a blessing to my life, so. And I guess you're okay on the school board too. But I'm, thank you so much, Jeff, for your leadership and for your patience with me and the many phone calls where I was like, can you just tell me if I'm off my rocker? And sometimes you're like, yeah, maybe you are. So, and I still love you for it. So, thank you so much, Jeff.
You have a beautiful rocker. Thank you for your confidence.
Thank you. You can call me and tell me that again, even, just generally, okay. I trust you.
Monica?
Well, Jeff, I gotta disclose to everybody here that I know Jeff for a long time. Jeff is actually the uncle of my husband. So I have known him for, for many years. And also, but I haven't known him working together or being together in this sense. And one joke that the family has about Jeff is that he's a type A personality. And gosh, if I got to experience that. Wasn't that type A? No? Well, I'm here. So, so I got, I got to experience that. I got to experience the, the leadership style of Jeff that is not a surprise for any of you that I did a struggle with a couple of times. And I got a, give her a hard time a couple of times because, well, that's how I am too. So, but, but I, but I do appreciate that he's, that you, Jeff, are always willing to, to, to be there for people and to see people how they are and to go with, with that, even the times that I, that, that, that we will go in back and forth in, in, in our criticism or not criticism of each other. Or maybe that's just a way of communicating. I know you and your family have always been kind, so I don't have anything else to add to that part. I, I, it's not a surprise for me. And also, I hope that I didn't personally give you too much of a hard time in your, in your board meeting and board. And I will see you around. And congrats in the title.
Thank you, Monica. I really took the heart of your comment tonight to be you today. We're always a work in progress, so that, and that means a lot. Thanks. I appreciate that. And I agree with that. Zach, anything? Man, a few words? You can be man, a few words?
Oh, I will. So Jeff and I have sat a lot of time in jail together. It's a true story. I'll see you on Friday. So for those of you who don't know, Jeff works in the jail and I do some work in the jails as well. And just kind of seeing your personality there and here. I don't think people understand all the, what you see here is also what he's done with incarcerated people for years. That compassion, that assertiveness, just doing the right thing. And he, and the lives he's touched and through corrections and transferring that to the school board. I just want to highlight that a little bit. It's, it's awesome. Because you don't see that kind of personality and that special touch in corrections too often. And I think it's lent itself well to the school board, and I hate to see you go, but very much appreciate everything you've done over the past four years. And knowing you're here for the right reasons is always relieving to know. So thank you for your work here and and elsewhere too.
Thank you, Zach. I don't have a wise comment to come out of. You know me well. Al, anything?
Yeah, just thanks for being here. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Thanks for the help in the last few years. You took over the spot for me and I appreciate that. It's a lot of work to be chair. It's a lot of stress to be chair. As I said, when you step into this spot, you don't get to just come to a meeting and be unprepared. You have to be prepared 100% for every subject on every single agenda. And try to be fair with how the meetings are run, and it's not always easy. But you've done a really good job of that. You are a man of your word. You said you were going to run for one term. You ran for one term and you didn't run for a second term. And I'm jealous of what you're going to be doing in the next few years. And that's having a hard time for the cattle and spending your summers with the lake. So enjoy, enjoy the retirement when you're done at the law enforcement center, which is soon. And I appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you, Al. It's been, I've been having a hard day with you. Teaching you how school finances work, so I appreciate you for all the work. Shannon, you can just ridiculous session out.
I have to tell you, my favorite memory is when you were running down the bus chute at Apollo when you were doing your graduation. I'm not sure why you were running down, but you were running down the finish line of the Olympics. It, that just captures you at your finest. And what a joy you are to be around, fun-loving, enjoying life. And so, thank you.
Thank you. I have very good friends that have went to District 742. They're all my age. I went to school the entire time with them. Probably nine, still hang on. Every one of them was bold. Every one of them had a ring, a hole. I got mine here, and I think it's because of actions like that. I try to find humor in everything and and be the child, so. I appreciate it. I also want to thank all the executives, directors out there because it was really a pleasure working with you guys and allowing me to be of service. Willie? Good old brother.
Hey, and so I haven't got a chance to say anything, and I'm going to take my glasses off so that I don't do the Matrix moment at this time. But I do have a couple of things I'd like to add out there or add into that conversation.
No pictures.
And, and so that's the one thing I'm going to abide by in terms of the pictures. I'm going to have Tammy Deland put them out social media-wise. So I did my part in terms of not putting it out there, but I did not instruct Tammy to not go ahead and do it. So just so you know, I followed your instructions, Chair Polaris.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. But with that, Jeff, I want to say thank you. And that thank you comes from our executive team. And that thank you comes from our executive team and it's for your passion, it's for your commitment to our families and to our students and to our staff in the 742 community. I also want to say a special thank you from me for your frank, honest, and what I'm going to tell the world is real conversations that you've had with me. I also want to say thank you for me personally inviting me and letting me get to know your family, for inviting me and for the invitation to visit your place of employment. Zach talked about jail, but I got a chance to actually see you in your element, in what you do every day, in the impact that you have on people in that domain. And that was a real insight for me. And so thank you for sharing that with me. I also want to say thank you for your visibility at school events, at community events, at basketball games and snowstorms, when, when there's nobody in the crowd as they're getting ready to go to the state championship and the region finals. Thank you for being at football games and just your visibility at robotics and music and every other thing that there could potentially be. And last but not least, I want to say, Jeff, do not be a stranger because we here in the 742 community want and need you. And with that, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Willie. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for the plaque, board members. We will move on to the next session, which will be session, it's going to be a closed session. We're going to be talking about possible real estate purchase of property. It's going to be conducted by Amy Skellrude, Executive Director of Finance and Business Services. So at this time, it's 9:02. We're going to suspend our regular school board meeting and we will enter into the closed session in about two, three minutes. We are going to have three people come down and hook up via their phones, the three board members that are remote. I do ask the remote, actually two board members that are remote, Les isn't here. Natalie and Monica, please make sure that you use your earbuds and make sure no one else is in the room, kids, that kind of stuff, so we can truly have a closed meeting. It's hard to control when there's people remote. All right, so everybody take about a two, three minute break. We'll go into our closed session when things are set up here. After our closed session, we will re-adjourn the regular school board meeting and then adjourn it. So, all right.
And Chair Polaris?
Yes.
And as you're getting ready to go do all that, I believe there's cake sitting there for people to enjoy. For you people at a remote, nope, I will not be saving you any because there's plenty of milk and I will finish the rest. I'm actually kidding, that will be going home with Jeff. All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys. And take drawings aloud.
Do we need a different login?
No, Ryan said it's going to be the same one. He's going to take care of that. So just stay logged in. Yeah, be comfortable.
Okay, thank you.
And have your cell phones available.
Okay.